Who's got the pins? We can see if we hear a drop.
Third call.
Okay, okay, let's call a meeting to order. This is Bell Vista City Council's special work session to talk about the budget and the business is proposed 2024 budget discussion. So why don't we start? I think we can start at the front and go through a couple of pages here. This is the discussion draft of November 30. The one we have. The first page is an overview that shows the revenues increasing 9% from last year's budget and expenditures increasing 9% from last year's budget. And we have a little bigger transfer to the street fund. So we're able to get the 2024 budget to be positive. After a fair amount of work by the staff to get to that point. And also the street fund budget is very similar to last year as far as the amount of funds they expect to get from the government. Of course, we're giving a little bit more from the city. Then Kim listed here some of the things in particular that are notable, what some of our big sources are. And we're talking about 3.8 million for city sales tax and 9.3 million for county sales tax in this budget. And property taxes being up a little bit as well. The next page, page.
Can I ask, do you want to like have comments as you go through page by page? You want to get through it for the, like, to where you want to get to and then we can give some feedback?
Yeah, I think comments as we go along is fine.
Okay. And by the way, I just, and I appreciate this and I do want you to know that, but I understand you're making conservative estimates, right? I don't know purposely or what, but I do think, and you know what? I'm not challenging any numbers and I'm not asking for any numbers to be changed at all. But I do think we're light on the revenue projection, you know? Well, I'd say significantly, a pretty big number. But you're managing your budget to that more conservative number as well. And that's never like a bad thing. Especially, you know, whenever you get to the latter part of this and we start talking about capital projects, you know, things that we're going to need financed over not just 2024, but into the future, you know, through the next four or five years. Because, you know, whenever you look at that, we're looking over the next five years, capital projects about $18 million red, right? So we're going to have to find somewhere to start making that money up in order to pay for those things or we're going to have to start cutting either from the city one or the other.
Yeah.
And I think we'll make some of that 18 million up, but not the whole entire amount. And you know, we never really actually hit our projected budget either as far as expenses are concerned because I know you fully fund city resources as you need to, you know, for all the headcount and everything like that, like this year so far year-to-date. We're about 1.3 million behind what the projected budget was, which is always helpful. We are year over year typically. Last comment I will make is I'm really glad we had the internet sales tax implemented and I'm really grateful for the COVID relief funds as well, or we would be in a, we would be in a pinch.
Yeah, yeah, it helps does that. There's a tendency to think of the internet tax in regard to the city budget. I know that's what I do, but it also affects, obviously that's a big effect on the county level.
Yeah, for sure, absolutely.
You know, the county has a pretty, already had a pretty healthy situation, but it's got to have an effect for them to have that added up.
So I guess I think it's consortium, not as conservative, but I think it's appropriate road to take as well. So, you know, again, once your budget kind of follows that conservative revenue number.
Right.
Which is a good, you know, it's a good way to manage the city budget, so.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, Kim, if you want to say something. I wasn't sure if the revenue was quite as conservative as it's been sometimes in the past.
No, it's not, it's not nearly as conservative as it has been in the past. Well, what we did this year was we annualized sales tax, okay? So I didn't do year-to-date, which is what I did last year. So prior to me getting there here, they just increased it like 3%. They did a fixed number and said it's going to increase by this. And they increased the budget, not the actual. So last year I took, I took the year-to-date budget and I said, okay, that's a 15% increase. We're going to go with that for '23. This year I took the '23 number and I annualized it. So I said, okay, if, if we stay where we are for year-to-date and then I make it for 12-year, we should, and that's our new budget. So what, what that, what that does is that there's a little bit of money available that we left on the table that Benton County says our revenues are going to go up 7% to 7.5%, right? For '24. So, so what I did was I annualized the '23 number, but did not include the county sales tax increase of 7%. And I didn't do that on purpose because if you, you know, I swear that everybody's doing their budget and the news gets bad about this time of year every year. So the reason I left that on the table is because I was inundated when I was preparing this budget, inundated about how we were going to be, have some sort of financial crisis in the next 12 months, okay? Now, I, I have a hard time believing that at this point because when I got here in '21, they said it was going to be '22. When I, in the '22 budget, I got all of this stuff and they said it was going to be '23. But here we are in December and the economy is doing way, way better than anybody expected in '23. But I can't discount the fact that there was news report after news report after news report saying that there was going to be some, some challenges in '24. So it wanted to leave us a little bit of cushion in the event that, that something happens. You know, the prior mayor, Peter Christie, used to always tell me that he'd rather we were conservative so we didn't have to lay anybody off, we didn't have to do any staff reductions, then get to, you know, mid-year, have a problem and then realize that we have to start doing staff reductions. So yes, thank you for noting that I am a little conservative, but it may be a half a million dollars on maybe, I can't remember the exact number. So I shouldn't even say a number, but it's not a huge amount of money. It's like 7%, for '24, of the, of the county sales taxes on the table.
Well, like you said, it, the economy, there's all these predictions about what's going to happen or what's about coming, but it never happens or it doesn't seem to happen.
So far.
And I mean, and we're somewhat of a bubble up here also in that what affects us or what affects the other parts of the country doesn't seem to affect us. But at some point, you've got to think it's going to have to affect us at some point.
That's kind of, that's kind of where I am is that, you know, it's, you just can't tell at this point. And the, and the indicators are all over the place.
Well, there's an article in Bloomberg that says that the long-awaited U.S. economy slowdown has begun.
When I read something just the, just this past week, because I thought about changing this number and about that the home sales is the lowest, the lowest new home, was it new or used home sales? The lowest in 20 years. It was a big number. And as we've discussed, you know, on council before, as goes the interest rate, as goes, you know, real estate, that's going to have a pretty dramatic effect on the city.
Well, something that's not mentioned in any of the capital expenditures for the next five years is at some point we're going to have to start talking about something about sewer systems. Because the mayor and I were at a meeting not too long ago with, the predictions are that in 2024, which is not very far away, northwest Arkansas will be over a million people. And I think the predictions are by that same time period that Bell Vista will be 50,000 people. Well, we know if we got 50,000 people, septic systems are not going to, are not going to work. It's not going to continue to work. Something's going to have to happen there. So at what point do we start talking about that?
Yeah, that's a good point, Jerry. So why don't we continue on? Page five kind of gives a general summary of the revenue and I think Kim's summary on the prior page has kind of already hit the high points of how she went up in the city and county. Franchise fees are almost the same, slightly down. Property taxes are going up some, so. That's, that's kind of the snapshot of the revenue. And then, of course, the streets revenue is very close to the same thing on the state turnback and the county turnback. So that gets us up to page seven, just highlighting some of the expenses that are newer public safety complex. New public safety complex has a higher operating cost, particularly compared to their extra small place they were in before. And benefit costs are up, you know, we're going to this self-insurance mode, but we accounted for it relatively conservatively. And employee salaries are up. In general, we haven't really talked about this that much in council, but in general, our salary increases were 4%. And Bentonville, city of Bentonville, Benton County, almost all the cities around us I know about are 3%. Springdale is a little more aggressive, they're 3.5% to 4.5%. But what's been happening, happening on the employee pay side is upward pressure from the police and more recently from the fire, from all our other cities. Bentonville gave a really large fire increase just a few weeks ago. And there's a lot of communication in northwest Arkansas, everybody knows about it. By everybody, I mean all the firemen. And so that's something we had to address. In fact, we had that old budget we'd given you. We worked real hard and cut about $800,000 out. And then we had a situation with fire compensation where we had to make some adjustments and it was a little over $100,000. Fire chief and Glenda in HR sat down and went through things and looked at people. I mean, there's people, the increases were very large. There was people that were out of whack by $6,000 a year, comparable jobs. So, you know, we, we didn't match people, but we tried to get in the vicinity of people, you know, on various jobs. So that's the way we approached that. But to me, those are the things I noticed is this been upward pressure, particularly on the police and fireside.
Yeah, you know, just because you're talking about payroll. You know, I don't know where this is going, you know, but I know a little bit more anyway. But the police department, and I know maybe about $80,000, $90,000 or something like that, it's due to probably moving over, I don't know, well, I don't know if it's a full $80,000. I guess it wouldn't be, expenses moving over from CDS to police because of code enforcement. But in the last two years, not, not just the last year. But the police department is up like almost $1.2 million in payroll. The fire department is up $1 million in payroll over the last two years, you know? And I'm not, that's no criticism, I'm just saying it's a big number. And, you know, this community is really supportive of, you know, the services we offer in both those regards. But it's like, wow, that's, that's pretty quick, right? As I said, it's just something that we have to keep our eye on, you know? This money that we banked, you know, it looks really good, but I don't know how long it's going to last in the long run. You know, so just something to think about.
Yeah, the, there's some cities around us that seem to have more money than we do and they've been pretty aggressive in how they're paying employees. On the plus side, I've been really encouraged the last year of our ability to hire people in, all over the city, in police and fire and other areas too. We've gotten some really good talent in CDS, new people we've hired. So I've been pretty encouraged by that.
Yeah, I think it's terrific. I think, you know, for me, the message is when I think about this community, I've been here for a while now, is we just have, we need retail, we need commercial development. You know, we can't just keep building homes and we have obviously one major owner of land, you know, that could impact that type of development. And then you quit building subdivisions and start building, you know, commercial retail properties. Properties that already exist and are already conducive to that, to that type of, you know, environment, if you will. And I don't know what's going on, but something needs to happen and break loose because we're not going to be able to fund our city if we don't have something happen here. We're just not, not in the long run, we're not going to be able to keep up. You know, like I said, two things, internet sales tax and COVID relief funds. And if it wasn't for those two things, we would be in dire straits right now.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point. We, we reasonably, we might have a little more success in getting more business in, in the near future, but we'll see, seeing is believing.
Some of the increase in fire, I think may have come from the fact that we've had funding for certain positions and then that funding drops off and we end up taking them on as full-time employees. So it goes from a zero-funded employee on our part to a fully funded employee. So some of that salary increase in fire comes from that, I believe. Is that, would that be right, Chief?
Yeah, it's been a while though since we've had that.
I thought we had, I thought we had someone still in that program.
Well, support dropped off percentage-wise as we move forward.
Yeah.
I think that plan ended in '21.
'21?
Yes.
And the purpose.
About that two-year.
Purpose is that he assumed the inspection team too.
Right, which was about $250,000.
Yeah, that's four employees.
Yeah.
And that didn't show up by night.
It doesn't show up, I just, I have a note in mind. I made a note a couple places that said, you know, that, you know, this reflects, you have to account for the fact that some employees moved. But if you want those numbers, you know, I did bring them with me to tell you what the impact on police and fire was, you know, I can tell you that if, if that's of interest to you. So the police, the police, the code was $155,000. And the inspectors, I'm sorry, I was wrong, it's $272,000 in fire. So 272 of that increase is fire and 155 is, is police. So the fire budget went up, salaries only, salaries only went up for fire by 9%. And the police without code went up by 12%, if that's what you're, if that's where you're going with that.
Thank you for those numbers, Kim, that's good.
Something here in the expenses is the number of vehicles that we're purchasing. How many vehicles do we own now? Anybody know?
I, I don't have an exact count. I can get that for you. It would just take me, you know, I can, if the council would like that number, I can get that for you this, this afternoon and email it to you. That's not, would take me very long.
CDS says five, building inspector says four.
Were you talking, so when we were talking about the wash bay, a number, and I, this is maybe total city, you know, counting, you know, the trucks and, you know, the streets and et cetera, it's like 135 or 136 vehicles, something like that.
And that didn't include the fire because they have their own wash bay?
They do their own?
That did not include the fires.
Okay. It would be everybody else except fire.
Correct.
So it's 135 less, does not include?
I could get the exact number, but when we were doing the wash bay, I had done a count of who all would be using it and I excluded fire department specifically from that number.
It's 135 or 137?
In the ballpark of that.
I would imagine it's closer to 150 when you put fire in there. But if you, I mean, I can just go ask Brenda and she can get it for us. It'd just take a few minutes or I can email the council. What would you like me to do?
Well, it's not going to happen in discussion today, I don't think, you know? But it's something to think about in the future, as we're talking about buying new vehicles and things like that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I know that when the police are set up, they used to kind of target, you can correct me, Chief, if I'm wrong. They used to kind of target 100,000 miles and I think they changed it to 110,000. So most of the vehicles you see the police buying are usually replacement for a vehicle that's gotten older.
Well, Mayor, now we're with the newer Tows, we're trying to push it to 120. So we're trying to get more and more out of our vehicles.
And those are, those are registered vehicle miles, those are not actual total equivalent miles that you put on because of all the idle time.
Oh, correct.
Yeah, so you've got really more mileage on those vehicles.
Well, you can double it in a police car.
What's that?
You can double it in a police car.
Almost, yeah.
So do we have any kind of preventive maintenance program?
Yeah, we, we work with the shops, with the, with the street department. They do most of our maintenance, they do a great job.
They have a couple of really good mechanics in the street department.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we've got house mechanics.
What about disposal of our vehicle? Are we using, I know that I've seen several vehicles parked back behind the street department, the police department.
You're asking when we're done with them?
Yeah.
They get auctioned off and it goes back into the city fund?
I mean, I've seen several vehicles, I say several, I've seen some vehicles parked back behind the police department or the street department back there. I've seen some pickup, maybe.
Well, there's some different Lesso vehicles, there's some evidence, there's some in-town vehicles, so, behind the gates. Some of those may not be ours, I'm not quite sure which, which you're speaking of. But, but back in the rear of the streets department was where we keep our newer vehicles that haven't been outfitted yet. We'll keep a lot of the Lesso vehicles, which we got from the Lesso.
He's got probably half of those spares all the time.
Yeah, and then, you know, we keep spares, like when the council wants to go to Little Rock or something, new vehicle, we'll give them a vehicle, so we keep a lot of those.
Because he doesn't cut a squat to insure them, so it doesn't really matter that. Insurance is like a hundred bucks a car.
And when you were talking, the mileage being doubled, you're, you're very.
Because of idle time.
Yeah, so if it's got 120,000 miles, it's been idling as much as it's been.
Yeah, you know, you get an accident, you get guys going in a house, warming them up, cooling them down, yeah. A lot more than a private vehicle.
Yeah.
If they weren't so wimpy, they wouldn't just warm them up, they just could hit them and go.
That's what we do now.
Because a good cop never gets wet, cold, or hungry.
Okay, I personally found these page eight and page 8.1 to be really good summaries. Page eight is an expenditure summary. And then page 8.1 is an expenditure summary excluding salary and benefits. So you can kind of look at the same department and get a feel for what's happened. First you look at the overall expenditure and then, you know, you might have such and such an increase and exclude salary and benefits as a different increase. You can get a picture where that, you know, where the pressure points are, where the money's going, however you want to put it.
What would the administration, operating budget of over 400,000, less or not including salary and benefits, what would that include?
Kim, you want to handle that? The admin budget that is not accounting salary and benefits?
Oh gosh, it's, um.
It's probably a breakdown in there some.
Yeah, so it's going to include audit, audit fees, insurance for the cars, not covered for other departments. It includes the public relations.
Page nine has a bit of a breakdown of it.
Budget, it's got a lot of.
Has contracts at 122,000, operations expense 249, those look like the big ones.
What would contracts, what all would that include?
For instance, that would include the audit fee. The audit fee's like $34,000. That's, you know, probably the single biggest one is audit fee. And then it's just miscellaneous different contracts. We, I know that, I don't think, I think we're the only, the only department that doesn't have cleaning. I think, you know, is that, is that in my budget?
That's in yours.
Yeah, so cleaning of this, of this facility.
Supplies.
Supplies. Supplies. And the operational is going to be all of your travel to, all of your travel to Little Rock and training for staff and, you know, fuel and internet, all of that. I can, I can, you know, it's a long list, but I'd be happy to, you know, provide you any detail about that you want, if you want more detail.
Includes all building expenses too, I'm sure, some worse.
Yeah, the good news is that last year we had, we had large building expenses, but this year, you know, it, we didn't budget, for instance, if you guys remember, we had the whole sewer thing that went on this year, that, that wasn't budgeted. And so we're hoping not to have any big building expenses next year because we're going to remodel this, this site. And we'll be moving over at the end of the year.
So, yeah, that comes up in the capital expenditure side.
Right.
Now, I should add a question. So the police department, when you've got 186,000, you know, increase in operating budget, is that, is that just pretty much due to the new, the new building now that you're having the age to?
Some of it, there was a little bit of increase in some software, west net related for dispatch. There was some increase, quite a bit with the new building as far as heat. An example is 25,000 a year just to maintain the heating and cooling.
Yeah.
So, so there was an increase in, we ran a little short on our, our maintenance for the vehicles running through the street departments, so we had an increase there. More tires, more maintenance, because more car and more personnel. I think we had a shortfall in our fuel, a little bit of shortfall in our fuel. So just, yeah, just-
Okay, so it's a weird, this is-
Yeah, it wasn't one giant thing. I mean, a big thing was the building this year, the operation expenses for the systems we have to maintain with the building coming here. But it was just a conglomeration of, of things.
Speaking of that subject matter, I should have mentioned before when I was talking about personnel. This budget has one new person in the fire department and one new person in IT the middle of the year, so it's like half a person.
Yeah.
That's it.
Half a PD.
Half a PD, yeah. But PD and fire in the middle of the year, if things are looking good, they've had a few people they wanted to expand by, but we held off on it. It's not in the budget at all. But CDS, streets, a lot of these departments are not adding anybody. Admin, city hall, they're not adding anybody. So we're very small as far as adding people. Now, we'll hire people to replace people when we have openings, but as far as adding new people, we're really pretty tight this year.
Yeah, IT, IT services, that continues to grow, but I'm, it's really, really necessary. You know, I was listening, I was just reading the other day, they were talking about the number of attacks made on hospitals, being held hostage. And, you know, authorities really don't want to pay off these fees, you know, that are being requested, being held hostage, right? But they're having to, they're having to pay the fees. I don't know why hospitals are targeted so much, but man, they are. But anyway, you know, I just, the spence is blowing up, but it's, I think it's justified for sure.
Yeah, we're adding people, paid in IT because we, you know, it was the middle of the year last year when we added Sydney Reynolds. It's been really strong for us. And then we were going to add more of a tech patient type person in the middle of the year. So we're trying to beef up our IT some. So if you look at page eight and there's a number of departments, admin and HR went down, CDS went down, of course, they had a few employees go to other departments. And there's only a few, the police increased fairly significant. And they added a few employees, as you mentioned, fire increased. So you can kind of get a feel for what's happening. We expanded library a little bit, so that's why they've had an increase, so.
Quite, Mr. Mayor, that'd be helpful to have a summary sheet for department by department, listing the staff there in 23 and then the transfers that were taken. And then the proposed new addition, so you've got a total count then for 24 or whatever that you're looking at.
You mean by department?
Yeah. So we can see three went from CDS to police department, four went to fire department, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Well, that was pretty much it for the transfers.
Yeah, right, but it doesn't show up in the counts here and so.
Yeah.
Useful.
We do have, one thing that happened this year.
The tallies are at the bottom and they could be-
We filled a lot of vacancies. We had 38 people leave and we hired about 58. And for the most part, they weren't new positions, they were vacant positions. So both the police and street were saying, hey, we're near full capacity, you know, we actually have, they haven't had a full staff in quite a while, so.
38 people left this year?
Yeah.
I mean, this year.
Yeah, it's always been, I've been interested in the turnover at the cities. I remember the one year, one of Peter's last years is close to 50. And I thought, man, that's almost 30%. Now we have about 200 employees, so 38 is about 20%. And mostly, it's always a little dangerous to generalize, but it's mostly fire and police and it's mostly younger. The good news is, is our more experienced people tend, have tended to stick with us. But, and I've talked to these guys about their hiring and they both, and about the cost of training and whatnot, and they both like to hire young entry-level people. And I don't disagree with that. I think they know what they're doing. But compared to what I'm used to in the private sector, and it's not one thing, it's not like, oh, everybody's going to Bentonville because it pays more money or anything like that. Sometimes people become firemen and, or become policemen and decide, hey, this isn't for me, you know, this isn't what I wanted to do. They go through all the training and they're qualified. It's a lot of different things. I don't, you guys have anything you want to add to that or?
No, I mean, I, I hate saying, but I think things will settle down a little bit as far as, at least on the finance side, as far as the upward pressure on wages. I think we went through a really tough cycle in 2023 where everybody was jockeying for limited personnel. And you saw a lot of the major cities, Rogers, Bentonville, Bentonville, everybody did these really large pay increases, which we kind of let the dust settle and then meeting with Glendon and with Kim and the mayor, we just kind of picked out where we needed to be to be competitive. So I'm hoping, because all the cities went through that, that, that can't continue like that. So I don't anticipate that in 2024. I'm not sure about the fire side, but that's kind of what we experienced. That's, that's why you see some of the giant increases, we just had to keep up. Right now, just to give you an example, our, our entry-level officer starts at 50 cents, 50 cents below Bentonville right now. That's a decent place to be, which leaves us still pretty competitive.
You know, one of the things I think happened, there was a lot of inflation, was a competitive job market. And the feds gave everybody money. All these people we're competing with, Springdale and Bentonville and Rogers got all this art money too. They got way more than we did. So the feds, you know, in some ways, you know, caused their own problem. They poured all this money in the cities and counties and so everybody's sitting there with fat war chests, running around stealing each other's peoples, what it looked like to me. So I think that Chief is right, it, it looks like it's going to sell, the job market's changed though. You know, we couldn't get people for a while hardly. And CDS, man, we've just gotten one person after another we're super happy with. And we need people with credentials. And, you know, it wasn't like that a year or two ago. You'd have no, many good and hard to give anybody to take it, take it. It seemed like everybody wanting to work was already working, so. So I, and the fire and the police have consistently been able to get new employees that are, I think are good qualities, so, you know. Personally, I like the idea of hiring young and promoting from within, you know, this idea where you run for, you have a nice job opening, so you run four states away and get somebody. Why not promote your own people? It helps morale a lot, you know. I'm a believer in that.
For a bunch of people, if they're qualified to fill the position, I agree with you 100%.
Yeah, so.
If it's a marginal difference, I might still go in that way.
So, anyway, so page eight has the expenditures for each department and eight dash one has expenditures, excluding salary and benefits, so you can kind of see what some of the pressure points are. And then the pages after this are details on the various departments. So you can dig into it a little bit and see what they have done on each one. See more questions on eight or eight one, or we can carry on.
I guess as an example, let's take human resources on page ten. They've got payroll expense that went up a little bit, probably the wage adjustment, benefits expense went down 98,000. That's almost half of what they approached last year. So there's no explanation of, you've lost people. Is this because of the new HR healthcare program? Is that why that?
It's actually kind of deceiving because, actually, America didn't ask me about that. And I hadn't remembered this, but last year when we, we get our workers' comp bill once a year, which is part of benefits. And last year we had assigned how that fell. We didn't, we didn't distribute it the same way we did this year. This year we distributed it more evenly across the different departments. Is that a fair way to explain that?
I just had a refined distinction to that, is that this year we got the bill before the budget went out. Last year it was the estimate based on what you said, and this year we got the bill. And because Glendon's on top of everything, we got some discounts. And so last year we didn't take any of the discounts out, right? Because we didn't know we were going to get discount, we didn't know what the discount amount would be. So this year, when I went through and calculated it, I said, you, you need to check my number because I'm showing about $100,000 decrease here. And we looked through the bill and indeed it's because of the discounts and how we allocate, we allocated the net bill after the discounts this year. But good catch, good eye.
What department you're talking about?
HR, the 98,000 on page 10.
The benefits went down, a, a couple of those are people that came off spouses, but the great majority of that was workers' comp related.
Yeah, with a tiny little group that I have, my percentage of increase goes up really fast by every little dollar change. And, and we had one spouse drop off this coming year, which makes a big difference too in my department.
These contracts expense seems to carry over neighbor departments. What kind of contracts would HR have?
Um, the, the highest dollar single contract I have is for processing payroll and the automated system we use for that to pay payroll and file taxes and process our benefits, enrollments.
And then the one will be processing your health program, right? There's not a contract that's ever included?
That gets billed under health insurance. We bill it out separately.
So it doesn't show up under contracts, it shows up under your other?
It'll be dispersed amongst each of the departments.
Yeah, right.
And that'll be under benefits is what she's saying. Just as a reminder, is that we are, you know, this, in this budget, we have estimated the premium by department, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so it hits the benefit. And that, that estimate includes things like her health, the healthcare.
Administration of the program.
Administration, yeah.
Beyond, beyond your department.
Before this year, the compensation was around $10 million and benefits was $4 million. So most of the money's in people. Your old budget's 23 or 24.
It's always in people.
Which, yeah, that's normally the case, yeah.
But we don't make widgets.
Yeah.
Is, is anyone looked at, is there any expense saving, any of these items that could be somewhat consolidated in terms of expense savings? Like for instance, supplies expense. Does every department purchase their own supplies or is there like a central purchasing?
I'll speak to that. Supply expense, the, the highest amount, I believe, for any department is approximately $5,000. So supply expense for the city of Bellevue is really miniscule. If, if it were to get to where we pay a vendor $35,000 or more as a city, we have to go out for bid and we have to do all of that. So yes, we, we would monitor that sort of thing, especially if it was a material amount. Right now, just for example, we're working on, on the cleaning contracts, right? To see if we can get a little bit of money from the cleaning contract process. So we do, the point, the answer is yes, we, we do look at that. But just to get, put it in perspective, the, I think the highest expense is $5,000 for anybody. And that is, office supplies is usually, is usually around, you know, it's 500 to, $500 in some departments and-
So, so don't you have like a contract with one of the office supplies where we get a better deal there if we order our stuff from that?
No, we don't.
So you just, every department goes out and says, well, I'm going to buy it from here or there or everywhere?
Because it's, it's pretty, it's pretty miniscule. It's just such a small amount that, you know, the effort of doing something like that. I'll, I'll be honest with you, my experience with that process has been very, I've never felt that that resulted in significant savings. And since our amount is so low to begin with, I, I can't imagine it would be more than maybe three or $400 savings total.
And your biggest expense is probably paper.
Yeah. Paper and coffee machines.
Yeah.
Well, you know, now that, now that the people are theoretically speaking paperless, even that, theoretically speaking, even that expense is pretty, pretty minor. I don't think we spend, gosh, I don't, I don't think we spend more than $5,000 as a city on paper. I'd be surprised, I'd be surprised it was more than $5,000. But I'll be happy to look into it.
No, it's not that big of a deal. And then we used to shop it. You know, we needed paper, we called everybody in our brother and got the best deal that day.
I know. I remember those days. And then we'd get contracts for paper. And I'd go look to check the contract and the contract would be more than I could buy it for on sale at, at Staples.
Okay, that's, so that was HR. Legal is like HR, fairly small budget. Me personally, I think we gained a great deal on legal and HR because the head of both departments do a hell of a lot. They're worth the money we're paying for the whole department, period. Well, it just totaled 38 people left, so that means you have to hire somebody, right? They've been doing a great job. IT, we have bumped that budget up some and that was partially, like I said, we had a person start in the middle of the year last year and we were planning to get another person beginning the year. But, but it's not all payroll and expenses. They have some contracts and, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot happening in IT with, and John Mogle's really good on continuous improvement, trying to figure out, because you really do, that's a field you really have to stay on top of and, and the cybersecurity thing and all. He had a special little seminar this fall. And we had people there from the FBI and Homeland Security and all these different cities and stuff. It was really, really impressive, some of the people that were involved in that, so. It was really, really impressive, some of the people that were involved in that, so. And that was at our training, our new training room, so.
Notice another expense here that every department's got, that's maintenance and repairs.
Mm-hmm.
What kind of maintenance and repairs would each department have?
Well, some, as I don't.
It could be a big one for each, like my department is vehicles, which another department might not have. There's office equipment, there's sometimes building maintenance.
Maintenance.
Yeah.
There's a whole bunch of line items under that, and they don't all apply to every department else.
Yeah, different, yeah, a lot of it, some of the bigger departments, a lot of it would be vehicles, but even, a lot of departments have just a little bit of vehicles and you still get some. But, yeah, the HVAC and the library probably could give you a speech about maintenance. Specialize in things breaking.
HR had five hundred dollars this year, but zero for next year.
I actually think that was a carryover that just wasn't getting used, and so we eliminated it. Because it probably was assumed there would be something under IT that John pretty much takes all the IT expense now.
Well, then, IT's got maintenance repairs for fifteen hundred bucks.
Yeah, we have two vehicles, I have a twenty-year-old van and a fourteen-year-old car to maintain. And luckily, they, they're both running good.
They had a new theory of getting a van and stocking it with all the repair stuff, you know, almost like repair people do, so no matter what building they're at, they would have a bunch of, and it's worked out pretty well.
Well, and you know, you've got, you retired police cars, and we did it, and I mentioned it to, well, you've got one of them. I mentioned it to Peter. Not all the cars that are retireable need to go for that purpose because it's different. But you can turn around and take the cars with a hundred thousand miles on it, because he's not going. You can take a Tahoe and do the same thing he's doing with his fourteen-year-old van. And he's excellent on Uber car, because not all the cars are totally dead. You just turn them over so the repairs don't get too bad, but you can do that.
We're already kind of doing that, like the van he has, is that the Lesso van? It's a Lesso van, it's from Lesso parts.
Some of us, you just transfer them down instead of getting rid of them right away.
And we've done that in streets. Streets has also done that, is taken.
It's a good way to get to the warriors of them. Some departments don't need new. It would be nice every now and then, but not all the time.
Depending how they use them, if they don't need them outfitted with a bunch of equipment to move over, that's costly to do and expensive if you do it every time. So, well, that's.
Needs to be accounted for, doesn't mean you're going to spend all of it, you know? Probably a lot of cases, it doesn't all get spent. But, you know, you don't want to have them repaired, they're going to come back and ask for nickels and dimes to be able to take care of something you take care of, so.
Yeah.
It's a novel expense.
It is kind of helpful when you're doing the budget, the way they have, they'll have lined out what that line item was the last four years or so. So sometimes you'll look at something and, you know, you had a thousand in there every year and nothing ever happened. You think, well, do we really need this? Maybe we should make this as, like she was saying on that one item, maybe this doesn't need to be.
You mean you have a tracking of what was spent?
Yeah.
That's what you're setting up.
Yeah, so you can kind of see.
Yeah.
Or maybe we may need to make this bigger, because we spent more than we thought we were. So that was IT. Let's see, next one is community development. It was, it went down partially because of the people being transferred. We did hire some people that were relatively well-paid, like our new part-time engineer. And man, he's made a big contribution already, there's just so, we had so much.
As an example, on this one here with the payroll expense went down by eighty-three thousand. Benefits went down a hundred and twenty thousand, contracts went down seventy-four thousand. But it would have been nice to show on there that, well, six people were transferred out, five from police departments, four from fire.
Yeah.
Down at the bottom would have helped explain it for us as to why that was there.
Yeah.
And it's good tracking too as well.
Mm-hmm.
So just because of community development's up here, and you sent it out, or at least you sent it to me, I don't know if you sent it to everybody else. How many housing permits, where are we this year compared to last year?
We're down.
We're down a little bit.
What about you? Is it a hundred?
We got seventy new ones last month, so that's going to be enough. It's down less than a hundred.
Versus your year-to-date last year, less than a hundred, okay.
Yeah, I was a little surprised with the interest rates going up so much. In fact, you know, Kim was talking about different economics, different places. All the national people are saying that real estate is just completely dead in the water. And it's not here. And I even talking to Jody Latham from Cooper, you know, they have a place up in Kansas City. And she said it's slowed considerably since the interest rates went up this year. It's not dead, but it's slowed quite a bit. And she hadn't seen the same thing down here in Bellevue, or in Northwest Arkansas, really.
The realtors tend to say that the buyers are buying the interest rate down, spending a couple of thousand dollars to buy the rate down.
Yeah.
And so it's part of their payment, but willing to do that.
Yeah, I had one builder tell me, he was, some of the people are renting the houses. And he says, as long as people take the house when I'm done, I'll keep building them. You know, they, some people rent them for a while, figuring, oh, the more rate will come down, then I'll buy it and take a mortgage. So, still a lot of people moving here. Interestingly, you know, I was at Newcomers the other day, and the lady who runs it said that there's more people from Texas than any other place. And it's been that way the last three, four, they meet once a quarter. So basically, for the whole last year, there's been more people from Texas. Now, that's an, that's not a scientific survey, that's whoever shows up at this meeting. But it's a lot of California and Texas activity for sure, Colorado maybe.
Couple houses in my neighborhood are from Texas, because the new buyers are from Texas.
No, it's just wanting to get away from you.
Well, one across the street, so.
Were you going to say something, Cassie?
No, I was just saying, Texas people are coming for the mountain biking. It's always historically been a state where we get a lot of mountain bike-related visitors from.
We do, are they really from Texas or are they from Austin?
Well.
I don't know what you guys are saying. I don't know why you're, you're saying we're all from Texas.
Well.
Y'all, I don't understand that.
Y'all.
So, anyway, let's see, where were we? So that's CDS.
Court.
And next one, yeah, it's the court, and that's down a little bit. And Tabitha tells me a lot of that has to do with the fact that they were paying rent in the old place they were.
Operations and expenses were the right one, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Was it?
So.
And contracts.
Now, I have a really nice landlord.
Yes, a really good landlord.
How nice he is.
Don't worry, within next year.
Okay.
What would, what would, actually, community development?
Okay.
What was their, what was their contracts, what were your contracts before?
I've got a whole list of them here for you to read. We have contracts with Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning, Benton County Solid Waste Board, Benton County Stormwater Engineers, Trails, Trails contracts for maintenance.
Well, it's just.
Yes, I recall the Benton County Solid Waste is pretty big dollars, isn't it? I mean.
That and regional planning.
Yeah.
But the return on regional planning's pretty good. They gave us five million dollars for.
Yeah, they helped us with, like, the Mersey Way Bridge, where it was seven million dollars, and we're going to end up paying less than a hundred thousand, maybe even zero, so. Still some puts and takes on it.
But that's the part that was going to, we'll have to wipe the dust off.
What would, what's a solid waste contract? What is it, what is it for?
That's the recycle center, Benton County Solid Waste District. There's a law that we.
Over there.
Yeah, that's kind of required, it's not optional activity.
Yeah, it has.
They're trying to give us out.
You know, I'm just curious, the court, it's nice to see you, by the way. Did we, you know, when we first moved and we got the court approved, we got it all put in place and hired people, we knew we were going to run in the red for a little while. Did, do we know if we've ever like moved into the positive on that? You know, where it doesn't cost the city money, but not, I don't know if it's called make money, but at least where it pays for itself. And you know what, I think it was a wonderful move, I said, great move. I mean, it saves police officers and rent, go down to Bentonville. There's a whole lot of side benefits to having it here, our residents, or whatever it may be, but I just wonder.
It's hard to compare, because I'm, and Tabitha's, Tabitha's budget, but I, the history of it, I can tell a bit. When we were paying Bentonville to use their court, we had no control over what the baseline total expenses were going to be. We were limited to a percentage of the expense because of our docket size, but we had no control over what the total was going to be. So Bentonville might decide they wanted to hire a couple of new clerks for small claims or something. Really didn't affect ours, but we would end up paying a portion, so we had no control. That was basically what it was about. And so I, you know, what they would have charged us today, had we still been over there, I have no idea. So to know whether we're actually saving or losing money compared to that number, it's hard to know.
Why not?
But Tabitha can tell you more about it.
They were getting ready to make a move to increase.
We had asked of us.
Year over year, about the time that we put ours in place, but it was going to be significant. Like you said, we had no control over it.
Yeah.
What about the docket?
I mean, as far as the bottom line, I don't know that courts ever really run black because we're dealing with criminal defendants.
Yeah.
And sometimes it's like getting blood out of their turnup, but we are having an increase in that area. Significant lately.
Jerry, any question about the total docket? Are we, did we see a reduction in cases this year? It seems like I've perceived a little reduction.
It's hard for me to say that, since we had all Bentonville transfer cases that we've been dealing with. I haven't run the numbers for the year for twenty-three to date. I can, and I can share that information if you would like, Jerry, because I'm not sure. It doesn't feel like to me that we had a decrease. I know it feels that way to prosecution, but there's some cases that Jason never sees. They just settle.
So is it an increase or a decrease over the previous year with Bentonville?
Oh, we have more cases per year now than we had the last year we were in Bentonville. I feel confident saying that.
We've seen a nice steady increase year over year.
Reflecting our population growth in some part years we were here.
Yeah. But at the start, I wasn't sure how to interpret your question. Doug, when you first asked it, I thought you meant the fines, are the fines enough to pay for the court? I don't think it ever really works out that way.
Yeah, I think we were hoping at my overtime. I, you know what, because I'm just curious, that's all. Like I said, I thought it was a great move and.
Well, it was going to be cheaper, whether it would pay for itself or never really, but it definitely is going to.
It's going to cost us less money.
Yeah.
We thought. I think it parried out to be.
Yeah, yeah, so. Okay, that's a good question. Let's see, we covered CDS and courts. Next one is police department.
Now, the increase there, it says total of six, three officers and one part-time.
Yeah, I want to, I want to address that. That's from a previous version that I just didn't, I didn't get removed. I'm going to replace that with the code enforcement, the number of people who got added for code enforcement. And the latest, I didn't update that particular note on that one or on fire.
So I've got, I've got a November seventh draft, and so is it different now?
Yes, we took out, we, that was, that's where we started, we took out all for the year. We took out, the headcount increase was removed for the current year. Except I just heard that we have a half a person.
Listen, is that the part-time custodian?
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we took out three officers.
I know, I, I just, I, I didn't update my note, is all I'm saying. So it's a point, it's a half-time, it's a half-year of a half-time person.
No, no, that half-time person is coming in January, so it's a full year of a half-time.
Yeah, so it's a one PT.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, so essentially, the number at the bottom would be plus three from CDS and plus a half.
Well, she's saying the number that's here, that's not valid, though.
Right, I'm just saying that the replacement would say plus three from CDS to the enforcement. Transfers, and then the plus a half for new custodian.
So we don't have any new officers?
No, new officers.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, about not hiring people, we had things like that, the three officers, and they didn't do it.
To fill vacancies, that's not a hiring, so it doesn't show up here, it just.
Yeah.
So you save money or?
Next time you're over at the public safety building, they have a really classy Christmas tree. And instead of getting some fancy Dan outside firm to rip them off, they went to Lowe's and bought a tree. And the number two person in the fire department, his wife helped decorate it. Turns out, she's a decorating expert, so it looks really good.
Did you see that, John?
Twelve-foot tall. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the wreath on the front of the building. I know the person involved in that well.
It's like the best wreath I ever saw.
Yeah, unbelievable, yeah.
So what did you say, a fancy Dan?
A Christmas tree. I don't know if you, some of you guys went to Municipal Lake, and they had a couple companies down there that did Christmas decorations.
Oh, yeah.
And I made contact with one of them, and the prices would curl your hair, I'm telling you.
They're very proud of.
They had Christmas trees that cost eighteen thousand dollars. Yeah, so I didn't get one.
Those didn't cost that much.
Yeah.
I got three in the head, I don't know. One of them's eight feet tall and seven feet wide at the bottom.
And you can't even give them away anymore, yeah.
No.
No, no place will take them.
Nope. You call us American House and you got it outside, and we don't want that.
Really?
Yep. Large item pickup.
You know, natural ones you can get with, because they.
People come properly, like.
Everyone already.
Yeah, they're put on the lake.
That's on tape. Easy.
Okay, so is there any more questions on the police?
Fire department. Community fire department.
Next one is fire department. So it's the same thing, that note about the headcount increase is not.
Yeah, sorry, I'll, I'll update that.
I have to admit, I didn't notice that, so.
Well, when I saw the payroll expense, it went up about, what, twenty percent? I question like this, ten percent. It'd be.
That's a big difference.
It was a noticeable difference.
Yeah, so. But we're pulling the line a lot, the other expenses are pretty well, so. That's good. Next one is library. And it has gone up a little bit on payroll and benefits. We, we added a new circulation manager fairly late in the year, so it was, it shows us a difference in this budget first.
What kind of manager?
The circulation manager.
Circulation?
Yeah.
For the library? What was the circulation manager?
Suzanne, you want to talk to that?
I wish I had the job description in front of me. They handle everything that has to do with reserves and making sure that there's people covering the library at all times, at night, weekends, all day long. They do, act as an office manager, so they order supplies, they take care of the computers, the people using the computers. It's just sort of a bring it all together under, it's its own department. And it really wasn't an, there was a half-time person that left, and so we add it to their hours.
Basically, we've had a big increase in usage at the library. It's been amazing, the, some of it's people coming from out of town, but it seems like a.
Every.
COVID being over.
Every day, every day, we're getting new cards. Every day, every day, we're getting new cards, California, Texas, California, Texas. They literally come in the library and said, I just got here. Can we get library cards?
Children's program, something more children. You're always talking about that.
I'm telling you, the children's programs have exploded.
It's massive.
We have now, we had story time on Fridays, we'd have one program that would get to 100 people. We of course don't, you know, that's against fire code, so we had to split that. We had last week, I think, 60 to 70 in the first hour and we had 50 in the second. That's kids and parents. Circulation is crazy. The amount of books that were checking in and out has increased. This is all, all prior to COVID. We've increased all those numbers. We're really growing and the people that are coming here want the library.
It's really kind of encouraging to see, because they keep stats on everything, you know, how many people come in and number of cards and it's just pretty neat to see the growth. So that's the library, let's see. Oh, the next one shows the debt service and that's all, that's all the truck, isn't it? Ladder truck?
Yes, sir. And just as a reminder, it's in capital expenditures, but it's always been shown here. So I put scheduled both places, basically.
Yeah.
So the only thing we have debt service on?
Pardon?
So the only thing we have debt service on?
Yes.
Yeah, we actually had gotten everything paid off and then we did the ladder truck last year. We haven't gotten the CapEx yet, but Kim and I will be looking at some of that stuff to see, you know, if it'd be smarter to spread it out over time. We almost consider that a conservative thing in a way, preserving your cash. Remember that when we did the ladder truck, we actually got higher percentage on the CD than we were paying, which is nice if you can do that.
What's the tracking, what's the tracking on the big bond issue, the 25,000, 25 million or whatever?
Last thing.
Where are we on that? I didn't see anything here.
Can I, can I send something out separately? You know, we get an update and I think if we don't have one in December, then we'll have one in January. We get, I think it's two times a year, we get an update to tell us the latest. And we got one this summer, so we should get one either, a new update either December, January. And I'll send you guys the latest estimated payoff date.
What did the last one say?
I can go get somebody to grab.
She said 2026 to 2028, depending on how our city taxes rolled. If they kept increasing 13% each year like they were, I think it'd be 2026. And if they just stayed even or, you know, went up a little bit, it'd be 2028. So somewhere in that timeframe, but each should have been updated.
Yeah, which is a huge, as you guys know, they're 20-year bonds, right? Are they 30-year bonds?
20-year, yeah.
20, so that's a pretty.
Pretty fast payout.
Yeah, that's way faster than anybody expected.
So I would beg the question as to maybe we should build a separate administrative city hall.
I thought you were going to say you should beg the question about sewers that he was talking about.
Yeah, that's a whole separate issue. That's a little more heavy.
Yeah. Okay, next one is the street department. And we are, I think we're in really good shape on this one because there's been a lot going on. They've been accomplishing a lot, but the budget's very much under control. And I've been really pleased with some of the stuff that's gone. I was at the street department this year, you know, we got Dogwood Drive completed, which had been closed for quite a while. And this thing on Chelsea Road where they had to close Chelsea and had to wait till the lake was lowered, so we got that successfully completed. They had to put a new culvert in under the road and it was cement. The metal one that was under there was, I'm nervous in a culvert more rusted out than that. Maybe Larry has, but it was pretty gone. Most of it wasn't even there anymore. So that was a great achievement and just the regular stuff that they're doing, I really feel, I feel good. Well, the one thing Karen was, I forget how he refers to it, but Dan had that list of kind of like work tickets or something with some insane amount. He worked it down practically totally.
Yes, we, oh, excuse me, I'll bring some totals to our next staff meeting, but we've completed more than 1,000 work orders year to date. That's citizens' requests, that's in-house things that we noticed, and that is in addition to all of our resurfacing prep work that we do, as well as all of the resurfacing streets. So it's quite an accomplishment for the department.
How is, is it the zipper, what do we call that?
Yes, it's a zipper.
How's that working?
It has worked really well. We've used it a few times. It will chew up a road that is in such poor condition that it actually takes the asphalt, breaks it up, puts it back down as part of your base of the new asphalt.
Right. I just hadn't heard, since we bought it, I haven't heard any really anything about it, you know, so I just.
You should have came out and saw one of the rest. Next time we do one, I could invite you to see it. I went out there and watched it firsthand. It was pretty impressive.
Did we do any slurry this year at all?
Yes.
We did some slurry, but we did a lot of asphalt too, right?
We did a lot of each.
Okay, I didn't know.
We had a carryover of the slurry from the previous year, so we did our full year's worth less, what was remaining, from 2022.
Okay, well, contract that didn't get completed?
Correct.
Yeah.
I think we had nine miles in asphalt and I want to say over 30 of slurry.
I was thinking we're close to 30.
Old carryover.
It's a lot, yeah.
There were some impressive numbers.
Trafalgar looks really good. I drive on it every morning going to work, so it's very.
Yeah, I was driving around the street the other day. I'm trying to remember where it was and it was obvious that it had just been.
Redone?
Redone, yeah. It was really nice.
So any more questions about streets?
How come the payroll expense only went up 2%? Did it go with less people?
No, we have the same headcount, but we had Mike Button retire last year.
Will we pay him too much?
Worth every penny.
Yeah, absolutely. Michael's a good guy. And you're doing a tremendous job of replacing, I mean, I won't say replacing, you have some different thing, but just stepping in, you're really impressive.
Thank you for that.
I give my kudos for mentioning Karen Hunt and Dan Downing. It's a logical way to go, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Great team.
Okay, well, I think we're ready to launch into CapEx. And the first page is just a general summary and a total current request, 11.3 million. And I think it might be more worthwhile to get into some detail.
Question, sorry.
Go ahead.
All right. And I know where the number comes from, Kim.
I'm making notes. You guys leave me some things to do, so I'm just making some notes to make sure.
Okay, the undersigned twelve balance has a 12, 31, 2022. So I know that comes off of the audit.
Correct.
Right? So that, you know, 17, and I know why you use it, but what is the number that we have, really have by today ending 2023? Because that number is not static at 17, because we go through 2023, so. And I know you'll do an audit this year and then that number will get adjusted, right?
That's right.
But it's got to be up.
We, well, yes, it will be up. I believe it will be up. But until we get everything closed for the year, I can't tell you what that number is. And that's the, that's the challenge we had before. We were, we were, we had a statistic that we were giving out that I didn't think had the credibility that this number does. Because this is audited number, it says this is where you were at the end of the year. And it's best practices to use a firm number to make your capital decisions on, right? Than trying to say, this is where we are right now before we close the year.
Yeah, and I guess what I want to do is, you know, I don't want to be looking at that number and go, well, that's the number, when it actually could be softer than that, right? So I can have confidence it's going to at least be that or more.
It will be at least that. Right now, right now, we are over on our sales tax.
Yep.
We're over on our sales tax for the year and we're under on expenses.
Right.
So, so we should still be, it should be at least this number.
Yeah, right.
Is what I'm expecting. If that's your question.
At least to 17, you mean?
Yes.
That was a good cross-examination, though.
I'm just saying, right?
We're on the night of the 70s, isn't it true? But one cautionary note that, Kim, I agree with what she said, it will be more, but there's three payrolls in December, so you always think you're running way ahead and then.
Three in December plus holiday pay.
I don't want to say way ahead. I just want to be confident that that number is at least still going to be the number.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Okay.
Excellent question.
There are only 26 pay periods in 2024. Couple of years ago, we got stuck with, there were 27 in the year and we ended up with a little problem before you joined us. I just, do you recall?
No.
It'll be a few years before that happens.
It doesn't roll around one day, once a decade. You actually have 27 payroll periods in a bi-weekly.
Let me know, that'll be my year of retirement.
It's like two full moons in a month or something.
A little moon, is that what they say?
Yeah. Terry Snow asked me a question before the meeting started. Down at the bottom here, it has capital requests, 1, 2, 3, 4, and then it has a number. And I couldn't match that up with anything.
And it doesn't match with anything that I can tell.
Is that supposed to be the number for each year?
That is, yes, those are the next four years after the, after the current one.
My totals for those next four years don't total the same as these.
How much is it all?
Take 25, I got 5.9, it says 5.6. 6.8 is the next one, 6.5 or 6. And then 3.7 versus 3.4. 3.9 versus 3.8.
But it gives, it gives an idea.
And I'll go check those formulas. I'll go check those formulas.
It's in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The next page, page two, is just showing the debt service and the fire department.
So instead of saying one cap or two cap, probably might suggest that you put down the year that you're representing there. We don't have to ask that kind of questions, whatever they are.
Okay, no worries. I can do that.
I figured out what they were when I entered them up before that was.
So page two is showing the debt service and the fire truck, we talked about it a minute ago. Page three is the fire department. And it's split into first is vehicles and then other, so both other. And one thing that makes this number vague is the renovation here. In this building here and the fire attached to it, that's 4.5 million, so that's a big part of the total capital. Now, in the chief's, the fire chief's defense, this is not all fire because city hall is here and of course CDS is going to be moving over here. But we figured out it'd be easier counting what, rather than splitting it up and then when you're working that, go, okay, now which expenses this go to, is, you know, we just decided to keep it all one thing.
Look, you got a couple of numbers here for land purchase.
That's correct.
Has that been, has that property been identified or?
No, well, areas have been identified, but property not. That's what I'm, we're still working on. So either South Central, South Central meaning somewhere down south on 71, between Oldham and East of Dartmoor area, which the mayor and I have reached out and a couple of options there. And then the other one is somewhere in the Highlands, Long Highlands Boulevard. And the only people have land out there is the one and only Cooper.
Yeah, so one of them is number five and the other one is number six, so it's planned in hand pretty far, but we.
We've got at least good land for those.
The way the economy is, it doesn't appear to be a big risk buying land.
Well, it's not too far off because you're looking at Station 5 in 2026, so.
No, that's the plan.
You said on 71 between Oldham and?
Either Oldham area or east towards Dartmoor. Torrenau area would be ideal. And the only people that have land there is Cooper and Waltons.
And who?
Waltons.
Walmart.
Well, they're the enterprises, yeah.
So the property where the where the Walmart store was planted or was going to go?
That is Waltons.
Oh, they bought that.
They have almost all that land. I don't know that there's any.
And we've had a couple of conversations with that group. The challenge there has always been a traffic signal at Oldham, because I think, I don't, this is going way back, Steve, you may remember. Didn't the city approach this highway department, buy a signal there and because of the proximity to Mercy Way, there was some issue with getting a traffic signal?
I think so, it's too close.
That was one of it, and you know, I keep saying, if Walmart would have bought the property, they would have got the light. You know, so that, that was just somebody who didn't want something to go in there who currently has a store across the street. And that was one of the big arguments we were giving like, well, if Walmart wanted the light, they'll get a light. And they got a light in Bentonville that gets them out of a parking lot.
Right. We could have made them build a light, whether they wanted to build a light or not.
Yeah.
Also, another, another conversation that has taken place with this whole town center complex renovation, the 4.5 million, is to maybe do part of that debt services and save some of our cash. We've had that conversation. So it's always possible to go out, put in a 78 loan to finance part of that property or construction.
Well, the 4.5 million here is not what we've already committed to, which is left.
So part of, part of that is being committed to, it's already been approved by council. Half of that. I'll do that amount in there because of the future additions. I went quite for sure, I kind of used around, you know, the number of new construction to kind of work on that.
You've got 2.3 then, that in 2025, which is what, the finishing?
That'd be the finishing of everything. And I know we talked about this, we got to have this and got to have that, but with new, new office space, regardless of what it's for, it's needed here for growth. Whether we use it for city hall in the future or whether we use it for something else. It's just a good, it's a good way to put new structure, new office space here for future growth for the city, and the city is going to grow.
Well, if you were talking about the administrative side of it, CDS and city hall, the amount of space you're generating for them and the new addition, it would be difficult to fill that with fire department expansion.
Well, for any, any expansion, any expansion, it could.
So it's a, it's a big commitment for us, is what it really boils down to. It's a, it's a big, big commitment. If we put city hall here, it's going to have to be here for a long time. And then the question is, do we have?
All the space to be here for a long time.
Are we providing enough seats, enough chairs for people to fill the needs of our city? That space. Just a 64 dollar question. I would see it with the.
Okay, so. Okay, any more questions about this page? Okay, the next page is police and replacement vehicles. There's a pretty big number, 615,000. One of the big things actually in my mind that's happening with police is the body and in-car cameras. You know, we have cameras on some of the vehicles, not all of them, plus where it's going. The body cams for the first time and as you can see, that's a big expense for several years. Did you want to talk about that a little bit, Chief?
Sure. So like Mayor said, currently we deploy a watch guard camera, in-car camera system that's gone defunct. Motorola bought that years ago. They bought it to basically kill it, I think, because they quit supporting it. And so basically we're deploying cars now without cameras in them, which we don't want to continue.
in them, which we don't want to continue to do for too long. So we've been, we've been looking at different systems now for the past year, and I've thought, well, if we're going to go for new car, in-car camera system, let's just get the body camera system out of the way as well, I was waiting until we got to the new building to do a body camera system, so, so we put together, got out and got some quotes from three different companies, found a company called Axon, who has a, who has, all the companies were, companies were very comparable, too, they weren't that far apart as far as pricing goes, but Axon had everything that we needed. Axon has a contract through NASPO, it's, it's a joint, um, corporate purchase, thank you, through NASPO with Arkansas, so we don't need to go out to bid for that, and so I'm putting proposals together next week, a work session, actual work session, to get this contract signed this year for this company. What this, what this contract will give us is forty body cameras, forty new in-car camera systems, it'll outfit for our four interview rooms with cameras and recordings, give us unlimited cloud-based storage. Halfway through the contract, they will replace all of our body cameras with brand-new cameras, and this is a fighter contract with brand-new cameras, they'll just replace them out to make sure everything's functioning properly. Also, Axon sells taser, the taser that officers use, the intermediate level weapon, so we're going to get some tasers on this contract at the same time, because it'll be cheaper for us to to bundle all together during that period of time, and so I'm going to, and if we, if we sign the contract this year, like everything else, everything goes on, if we don't get the contract signed this year, it'll cost us another hundred twenty thousand dollars over a five-year, the five-year life of the contract, and so Jason is reviewing their contract, I sent it in today, I've read it, it has, within the contract, it's a clause, and I don't know the whole legal term, but basically, if, if money's not provided within our budget by council legally appropriated, then we're not obligated to remain within the contract, and so that'll allow the mayor, if the council approves it, to sign the contract after the, after the actual council session on the eighteenth, if everything's approved, he could sign it prior to the end of the month, which will lock us into the 2023 prices, and the contract will not take effect until 2024, so that'll save us hundred twenty thousand dollars, and so I'll have more for everybody next week at the work session, but like I say, we took three different companies, looked at all of them, and Axon has, has the best product. It's a product that Fayetteville uses as well, I talked to that chief, they've deployed this product. The key things about it which saves us money is they have unlimited cloud, cloud-based storage, the camera system, they come out to my department and will install the cameras at no extra cost, so it's built into the contract, so they'll come out and take out my old camera system and put in the new camera system onsite for us.
That's the, the cameras?
That's the car cameras as well, they'll come out, the interview room cameras, obviously, but my cars, I don't take my cars anywhere else, they'll come out to the PD, and they will do the cars there at the...
Okay.
And so that saves us a lot of money. The other two companies we looked at, that's an extra expense of about seventy thousand dollars, and we have to find a place to do it, and they have to be trained on Axon, it's just, it's a lot, it's a lot more working part. And then also, the fact they'll come out mid, mid-contract, and they will replace the body cameras, and then somebody asked me, I don't know who was in this group, but somebody asked me, what if in five years, we decide we hate it, we want to go with another, another system, what about all of our cloud-based information, and it's ours, and all, all we'll have to do then is get the hard data capacity, we can download it, but so all of our evidence is on their cloud, it is our evidence by contract, it's not theirs, if we have possession of it, we can get it when we need it after five years, or whenever, if we decide to move away from that.
So it's pretty secure there for us?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's, this is, yeah, it's, it's, well, John, probably speak of security in the future, but it's, it's, it's...
Yeah, CJ's and Fed Grant combined and all that stuff, yeah.
What brand is their system? Is it Motorola, Kenwood, something?
It's Axon.
Okay, they have their own?
They have their own, yeah, it's Axon. It's not Motorola, Motorola bought WatchGuard and stuff. We got a bid from Motorola, it wasn't, the system's not as good, one more thing I like about Axon is, is we can add capacity to the system, let's say in the future, we decide we need it, we want a license plate readers on our cars, okay, then it's, it's, it's just a software update on the system, the existing cameras are, the hardware already does the work, okay, I don't have to buy another gadget to do this, and so if we add capability to this system in the future, they're just software updates, they're not additional hardware. That kind of answered it, Jerry, do you have something?
Yeah, does the old equipment have any value, like to a smaller department or anything?
No, because it's not supported anymore. We actually tried ourselves, and WatchGuard started going out, other agencies were moving away from, we tried to get their WatchGuard equipment to limp along with, and it's just not supported software-wise.
We own the cameras?
We do own cameras, so when they come and switch them out for five years, we need to keep the old cameras. So, so, yeah, so they only switched off the body cameras, they, they took our old body cameras, give us new body cameras. We own the cameras, and then, and the in-car cameras, we own them, so let's say fighters, when this contract is up, the next contract, maybe it doesn't cost us as much as maybe we don't have to put on the cameras, maybe those cameras are still operable, okay, that's something, we'll, we'll talk to them about what that historically looks like, so, so fighters, we own everything, and so hopefully, the system is still working, we don't necessarily have to go with a whole new system all over again. So I do see this, if we stick with this company, it is an expense in the future, but I don't necessarily see it being this gigantic expense in the future, barring things go up in cost and I don't like, but I don't think we need to go with forty brand-new in-car cameras after five years, because I'm sure some of them will still be...
Is it more cellular for data? Is it that we're going to have to have more telecommunications capacity to operate them?
It'll come, so they all come with that capacity in the contract, I mean, they come, I don't know if the air card's the right word, John, but, but they all come with the...
It's not additional cell bills for this?
No, and as far as the camera system, I believe they download when you get to the station, right? I believe, like most camera systems, you drop the field, it records, your body cam records, your car cam records, it stores it, and when you get near the station or downloading point, it downloads it like over Wi-Fi.
Okay, it's like an automatic feature, isn't it?
Yeah, it automatically recognizes, that's how WatchGuard, it just downloads it when you get near the WatchGuard antenna.
What about code enforcement?
Deploying the body cameras from this point on. But we will have forty, and I don't have forty patrol officers, so there is a capacity, you know, room and forward, to look at different uses for that.
Is there a, is there a certain increment, so if we have forty, the next increment would be fifty or forty-five?
So there, yeah, it is cheaper when you buy lots of them.
They have a step in there, a stepping increment?
Yeah, yeah, right now, you know, I have forty, forty-two commissioned officers, they're not all going to have body cameras, patrol's about twenty-eight, so I can see patrol having them, maybe some detective vehicles, we'll deploy them in different ways, but, but we'll have plenty of cameras to start with, and yes, you do buy them by lots, it's cheaper to buy like twenty than probably ten.
So, it's the modern world, it's a, it's a big expense, you know, but it's necessary, and we really need to get our car cameras stuff upgraded anyway, since these other guys are fading away.
These camera systems potentially save us thousands of dollars in legal expenses, and, I mean, it protects the officers from people that make claims against them, it protects the public from, you know, to make sure everyone's just on the up and up, you know, we've seen what all can happen, but it's a good way to make sure everybody sees what's going on, and, and I think it's a money saver in the long run.
And real quick, I'll mention this, and I think it's, I think we're going to be, agency will be forced in the future, I think, you see the President's modern-day policing plan, and all, some of the stuff that trickles down from the federal government, and then, you know, that you see the states picking it up, and, and I, you know, one is like use of force, and duty intervening, that stuff was pushed down to the states, which we're doing anyways already, but I can see this in the future being something that, if you want federal funding, if you want certain things, you have to have these certain systems in place, and so nowadays, if you don't have a body camera system in place, then people look at you like you're doing something wrong, like, why don't you have it? Why doesn't the officer have a camera? And so it helps us more than it definitely hurts us, and one lawsuit, it will, it will pay for this, not, not having one lawsuit will pay for the system very quickly.
So the fact that it's a hundred and fifty-seven thousand each year for the next five years, is that a five-year contract that we have that we're going into?
Yes, yes, so, so basically, when you see it at a work session, you'll be, if you, if the council approves, they'll be approving a seven, eight, seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollar contract with Axon to be paid in increments of not to exceed a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars a year over five years.
And when the chief told me, oh, if we sign this year, it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars less, and, yes, we're saving a hundred and twenty thousand, we'll know the price is going up a hundred and twenty thousand if you don't sign for it at the end of the year. So that's why we're moving that along, hopefully. On replacement vehicles, six hundred fifteen thousand, how many vehicles does that have?
Nine vehicles, that'll be six patrol, a couple admin, one detective, vehicle, vehicles, you know, they're, the problem is, the Dodge Charger, quit making the Dodge Charger, okay, and so now we're, now you have the Tahoe, Tahoe's pretty expensive, so we're looking at the Durangos, well, so this, this, these patrol vehicles, I believe, we're getting, we're going to go for four Tahos right now, we're going to go for three Durangos, which are, which are less expensive in hopes of, we haven't tried it before, so I want to try that as a patrol vehicle before I commit to that, having mostly a Durango fleet, so we're trying to mix fleet this year to see if the Durango works better as a patrol car, because then we can, we can save the city some money and get Durangos as opposed to, as opposed to all Tahos. I hear rumblings, you know, that 2024 will start to see a decrease in car prices because this is not sustainable, I mean, if you watch the car industry, there's a lot of people that can't afford, people turn all their cars in because they're just too expensive, so I don't see this, this price continue to increase like this, it's just impossible, so, I mean, that's where it's at, they are expensive, it's, it's a big cost, but we've done a lot to choose the best platforms, and one good thing about the Tahoe, I've talked to Dwayne, the Streets Department, one of the head mechanic out there, I asked him, do you think I could push these Tahos to a hundred and twenty thousand to save some of the money? He thinks we can, we haven't done that yet, I don't know if we've done that with admin Tahos, but not patrol Tahos, so it remains to be seen, but he thinks we can get more miles. He says the Tahoe's the best platform for a patrol platform, in that it's, it's, it's the most durable and least maintenance, it's most maintenance-friendly, and so he believes we're saving money on the Tahoe as a patrol platform, maintenance-wise, and if we can push it to a hundred and twenty thousand, that'll be even better, too, because you're saving that another ten thousand miles, and every time we, we switch out a vehicle, there's expensive taking all the equipment out, putting all the equipment back in, so if we're pushing that out another ten thousand miles, that'll save money in the long run.
Now, the Durango is...
Maintenance are very good. What's that?
The, I'm assuming the Tahoe is a, is a version of a police vehicle, and those they have it outfitted a certain way?
It's a police Tahoe, yeah, it's not, it's not off the...
It's not the regular off-the-street, so Durango, is that outfitted as a special?
It's a police Durango, yeah, so it's the Durango, it looks just like a regular Durango, but it's, it's a police model, it's an extra suspension and better brakes and things like that.
Bigger engine.
And it comes with the wiring already installed for your equipment, and so it's a lot easier when they go to install.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that. Next item is streets.
Best question on police boards.
Sure.
What's a building improvement for a hundred grand?
Okay, so that's next year, if we can do that, so we have, yeah, it's not the new building, don't worry, we didn't already break it, so, on, behind the Streets Department, there is a operations building that we use, that I, that used to be an evidence building, but now all the evidence is housed in the main building, so we turned that into an operations building, squad, a lot of our equipment's out there, there's, there's no, there's no water out there, there's no sewer out there, so we want to let people start to work from that building, we have an officer working out there now, I have a porta potty at Bay Point that sits out there, but, so the future growth, what we're thinking about is to maybe run sewer back there, run water back there, hoping to work with, with Karen and her folks to help us mitigate some of those costs, but maybe we, we help dig it as a city, and then maybe put a bathroom out there, so that's, that's kind of what that, that's just a wag, Jerry, it's a placeholder to get started, maybe.
So that's 2025, right?
Yes, yeah, that's 2025.
Okay, the next one is street capital expenditures, they total two point six million, and the biggest thing is street overlay resurfacing at one point nine million.
That's in addition to the one point one? We're transferring one point one to the Street Department, right? And then that typically for resurfacing?
In our operating is slurry, and in the capital, it's going to be the hot mix.
Yeah, so one more change.
You have a capital...
Jack, my boat's operating versus...
Yes, the capital is the one we're looking at right now, that's for the hot mix.
That's the one...
One point nine, that's a twenty percent increase over what we had this year.
And where, where does the seal code go?
It's the slurry seal is now going to be in the operating account, in our operations budget, we already went through that one, under our contracts.
And it's there because of...
It was for accounting reasons.
Well, let me, let me, that sounds like accounting. Yeah, do it! No, the, the theory is, is that when she does the overlay, she's actually making an improvement to the street, okay? The slurry is not a...
Maintenance.
It, it's more of a maintenance expense, whereas the overlay is, you're improving the road, it, it's a capital expense, so that's, that's why we did it, we didn't just say, oh, listen, you know, it, it's going to last a number of years, right? It's, it's an expensive item, it lasts more than a year, theoretically speaking, and it's an improvement and an extension of life, therefore theoretically, it should be a...
But theoretically, the slurry code will last more than a year, too, so...
But it doesn't improve.
It's technically, it's a preservative slurry, it's a preservative...
It's a maintenance.
Caught up, got caught on a technicality, so...
Well, I just, you know, I just think it...
Moving forward, it makes more sense to place it, the hot mix in the capital.
In your operations project.
Yes. We've always had some resurfacing in both operations and capital, this is just more of a defining line on what goes where.
I thought it was already being done.
You know, last year, I believe that overlay was a hundred and thirty-five grand a mile, which thrilled us, it was less than we thought it was going to be, so if that was the case, we could do fifteen miles, but Karen's telling me that's not going to be the case, it's going to be more than a hundred and thirty-five K a mile.
Man, you remember I came out the street and just asked one time, if you guys to do the overlay versus the asphalt?
Right.
And it was like, asphalt was like sixty thousand dollars a mile, and the overlay or the slurry was like twenty-one thousand dollars a mile.
Yes, it is definitely cost-effective to maintain them as long as possible.
That hadn't been that long ago either, that was probably three, four years ago, maybe, somewhere.
Right.
So how does the assessment or the judgment go on, on whether the street is suitable for asphalt, or whether it needs to be mixed, some asphalt, some slurry, some asphalt?
Well, a lot of our mains are going to be the hot mix because of the wear and tear that they have, our through streets would be more likely candidates, but any street that we can maintain using the slurry seal and get extended life out of it, we would go that route because our dollar goes further, but on our mains, we're going to have to do those, and the hot mix just sustains the amount of traffic that travels on those. And that number is not hot mix only, that's our resurfacing, so it would include any type of butt joints, valve adjustment, manhole striping, which is usually about forty grand a year, trail crossings, everything associated with the resurfacing of those roads.
So do we, do, on the, on the larger streets, arterials, minor arterials, major collectors, do we consider using a better quality paint that gives us better longevity versus, and the cost is higher?
We use the, our, the state-approved paint striping, I don't know if there's a higher quality unless you wanted to go with like a thermoplastic, which is very expensive in comparison.
And, and the question is whether that's warranted on some of the streets, because they, they fade out, you almost need to pan, because of the heavy traffic that's there?
Yes, we do re-stripes roads that are not being resurfaced as well, if they just tend to be fading, that would come out of that pot.
Okay.
So we did Wellington this year, for example, where we didn't repave, but we did re-stripe because the road structure itself was there.
Paint wore off with the road?
Correct, correct, so we do re-stripe those.
So, any more questions on the street capital expenditure?
Yeah, what's, what is new home road construction?
That is, basically, when someone builds an undeveloped road, that has been a go trail or been not touched in years, so we basically have to go in there and build a new road, a lot of times, that's bringing your red dirt in, replacing any culverts that have just... A lot of times that's bringing your red dirt in, replacing any culverts that have just been destroyed over years of neglect and, and maintenance. This is a way of us tracking that cost. That does not include hot mix asphalt or paved surface, that's just getting them to the minimum passable standards.
So that would include regrading for drainage, restoring the roadbed and then putting white stone on it?
Yes.
SB 2.
Yes.
Now, do you think it should also include? I'm just asking the question because, you know, the idea here was for us to know, when people come in and they buy these, these properties on unpaved roads, how much does it cost the city for them to, you know? Because it takes, you know, we might make $2,000 a year in property taxes. So it takes a long time for us to get that money back. But as I hear you guys talk, does it make sense for us to take the slurry or the overlay or anything else? I, and add it to this?
No.
No, okay, so you...
They don't deserve that until you get enough people on the street to...
Well, that's not the way it works.
As long as you have a...
This is a passable, all-weather surface.
A year-round road surface there, that's all that's required.
It is the minimum.
That's the minimum.
To get someone to their new home.
You can get a fire truck there.
So these are road improvements shy of full, I mean, this...
Right, this is to get them...
Clear the road and make it so you can put...
Passable, correct.
Okay, so the question is...
It's not just the full.
If we have to put, if somebody builds a new home, this is, you know, I'm just trying to make sure we're tracking it in a way that's helpful, right? If somebody built, we, builds on one of these roads, will you ever have to go in and put overlay on it?
No, absolutely not.
Not unless it was a maintenance issue. Like last year, we did a few new roads, they were the ones that were a significant city maintenance issue on a steep, steep hill. One that would get washed out consistently.
Because we upgraded the street.
Because it benefits the city to pave that due to the maintenance.
That's an internal decision, not driven by outside people.
Correct, internal decision.
So you don't want it on that line item, right? That's what I'm saying, is even if the city decides, because here's my, here's my point, is if those people didn't buy that house there, the decision wouldn't be made, we wouldn't have made that decision, right? To, to put overlay or anything else. But because we have a new person buying that lot, then we have to go in and we have to do this new road construction, then we have to go and do the overlay or whatever else, slurry or whatever else. Do we wanna put that number in there or leave it buried in the street overlay? Do you, is my question clear?
It's not buried in the street overlay, that's that line item, 09? Okay, on the, on the, on the capital.
SD 2409.
SD 2409, this is the ones I was telling you about that are extreme maintenance to the city. We were able to do two miles worth that benefited the city to pave those in 2023. This is that same amount to do 2024 on anything that becomes, as new home builds are on these undeveloped streets, it would become a maintenance headache for the city to keep it maintained as gravel. We are able to...
Okay, so those two go together.
Do up to the two miles, those are...
Those are gonna go together, so it's...
Nine and 10.
Okay, so it's actually 525,000 in new roads because a new house going in. Okay, I got it, I just, that's, that's a good piece of clarity. I just thought maybe it wasn't, wasn't being tracked in a way that we could...
We would be able to separate new paving versus maintenance paving.
Okay, good, okay, thank you.
But, but really, 09 and 10 are tied together there like this?
Correct.
Yes, and I, I might change the, we may visit on changing the description so that they'll, they'll, they'll appear descriptive wise to be the same.
Is it not possible or feasible to require the home builder, the builder that home to do the, the street to it?
You can only require legally a proportion amount of improvement to the burden that the development has on the city. So I don't know that you could require a builder to build out 100% of the street all the way to the drive. It's possible there could be something that they could be made to pay. Now, our current code doesn't account for that, it would, you know, we'd have to change some ordinances and things. But the most we could require would be a proportion amount based on the impact that, that, that particular development has to the city. And it's gonna be different probably for every house. And it's something that would probably be difficult to calculate. But legally, there's probably a way.
We kind of struggled with that last time we did impact fees. But when we revisit impact fees, I think we'll look at it and see if we can figure anything out.
I think it would be good for us to look, look at it quickly as we can.
If you recall, the study we had, the people who did our study for us, would, they couldn't, they, they, their opinion was we could not use it. And we cannot assess an impact fee. And I'm not talking about assessing an impact fee.
No, I'm not.
I'm talking about requiring right-of-way improvements to a development. Which is very common in a commercial setting, such as, I used to see it a lot in the new growth areas in Rogers and Bentonville. Nice office building will go in, it'll be, have curb and gutter on one side, and half of it will be paved and improved. And the other half will be, look like a county road with the old asphalt and a ditch. Because the new developer had to do their half of the road, and whoever develops the other side would end up doing that half of the road. And that's how the city over time gets their streets built out, even though there's existing right-of-way there. So I'm not personally familiar with home builders doing that, but a home building is a development. And I don't think the law prohibits it.
Could we impose a fee?
A payment in lieu of the improvement, I think you could look at something like that.
Correct, yeah. No, it's not an impact fee.
No, it's not an impact fee.
It's just a fee.
It's right, it's either required right-of-way improvement or it is a payment of a fee in lieu of the improvement. So they are, not necessarily a fee, maybe even they bond it or something. I mean, I mean, that's a, that would have to be researched and looked into, I mean, there's a lot of things we'd have to do.
That should be a priority for us to figure out how to go act that, because that's a, that's a, we're looking at $525,000 here.
But, you know, builders are going to be upset.
Oh, yeah, that's why.
Okay, so I, you know.
That's like the SDR.
I'm not saying this is gonna go over smoothly, but, and it will be, I'm sure a lawsuit. I'm just, I mean, I'm not trying to be negative, I'm just being honest with you, okay?
Usually could impact the fact that maybe they won't build.
Or they'll build where there's already a street.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And you'll get infill rather than expect.
And you know, we keep sticking it to people, you know, we want them to come, we don't want them not to come.
Well, eventually they'll come when there's no infill left.
Maybe. The only reason they're coming now because lots are cheaper here than they are in Bentonville. That's the biggest reason.
Okay.
I, I think that should be a priority for us.
We'll take a look at it. Uh, next thing is CDS, and their capital requirements are not large. The big thing on there actually is this Sony Code Reform Project, which is underway. And so that's already in ink, it's affirmed.
The Veterans Remembrance, what, what is our cost there? Is that, the Veterans Remembrance, does that not belong to...
I think that was, that was put in there because we might end up doing something with them, is that what you had? Yeah, we, they've been having, they've had conversations with us for a while about getting more involved in that. And I'd say that's speculative right now, actually.
Do we want to take it out?
How about traffic light cabinet hardware, belonging to the Streets Department?
Can I just, just, after we saying that we wanna remove that, or we just wanna leave that $5,000 standing?
Leave it sit.
I'll leave it.
Pardon?
Leave it sit.
Okay, all right.
That's not a big number.
No, but I want every dollar.
Doug, do you want to explain about the traffic light cabinet hardware?
Sure, that's the metal boxes you see located near the traffic lights that have all the camera detection software.
Trail system.
No, main traffic lights.
Traffic lights like 71.
Yellow, green, those guys. But why isn't that in the Streets Department instead of in the development?
CDS maintains a contract with the traffic light engineers.
Yeah, that's, we've done it for quite some time, isn't it?
And it's worked, why change it?
And that's only if the, you know, that's only if the expense gets incurred. So that's, you know, that's speculative as well.
Because we have spending about every two years.
Yeah, they have one hit about every two years, so.
We find new signs to get hit. Sometimes we know who does it, and sometimes there's no insurance to pay for it.
We know who does it, we file, we do what we can to file insurance claims and get the...
But sometimes they get hit, and there's nobody around, or the wind knocks them down, or a tree falls on.
So Doug, you're only planning on buying one new vehicle a year for the next?
Every other year.
Yeah, every other year, right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, no, 24, 25, 26, 27.
There's none in 24.
No.
You gotta know where you're looking.
You got one in 23, he's looking at one in 25, he's looking at another one in 27, and then 28 apparently it's an anomaly because he's got a vehicle there too. Well, every now and then it catches up. Every now and then it catches up.
So...
I think there's a copy.
Is that a different?
Yeah, you've got old copy.
Yeah.
Open up the computers, hit.
Yeah.
I've got one for 25, one for 27, and tentative one for 28, you know, we'll see.
Yeah, so none for this year, so that's good.
Well, not in 24.
He just got one, he just bought one in 23.
Well, two in 23.
I didn't count, though.
Oh, okay. So HVAC replacement, this is under the library.
That's an original thing?
Uh, no, this is leftover from last year. We're leaving it there because we expected it to go kaput last year.
And it's hanging on.
Okay. So we did spend the money last year, so we have a leftover. Is that enough?
That's it for the last one. Next one is the court. And I didn't get a chance to talk to you, Tabitha, before the meeting, but I was thinking we should knock this out, take it out.
It's a pipe dream. We tried to keep as much furniture when we moved as possible. But I was not expecting or anticipating, I wasn't thinking about it, is that the chairs are beige in color, like a beige-y yellow. And the courtroom is green and black and gray. And they look kind of puky in there. So it's just kind of a, we spent a lot of money on a building and our chairs don't match.
Yeah.
That...
Talk to the architect about what he chose for finishes.
Well, I didn't get a hint of that. But, so that's kind of a pipe dream.
Last time we met, I had looked at it, yeah. And I knew of a couple people that I consider incredibly picky, who hadn't said, hey, what the hell, the chairs don't match. So I went and looked at it myself, and I thought they were...
How much would they all suppose they're on for a courtroom?
We need to wear amounts first.
I don't know, that is an option, but I don't know.
Because they're not that old.
They're not, but I don't know.
And if we could get a couple hundred dollars for them all down the street corner, you know?
We probably could sell them.
With a sign on the freeway, they're all.
I mean, we would sell what we have to replace.
Are you talking about the council chairs and...
No, 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 the audience chairs.
Oh!
Um, and then in the...
People look at. I've never had a stare at a United States.
Well, when we moved in, we rolled them in, I was like, oh my, we've spent all this money on this building and the chairs are grossly mismatched, but anyway.
Exactly, no guilty duty, come to the church.
Anyway, to finish what I was saying, also in the disposition hallway, it's all right. We do need benches in that hallway. That is a very busy hallway, it's busier than I anticipated on court days, and there's no room for people to park it.
That was part of the 50,000?
That is part of it as well.
Yeah, we all agree on the benches.
Um, because I have four chairs in that hallway, but two have walked away.
How about if we just replaced half the chairs with the very color and take the ones we take out and put them in the hallway? Look at checkerboard.
Well, the hallway's not that.
And you have two color chairs.
It's that side hallway.
Basically, it needs to be lined up, but the benches you can put...
So what would we, we could just let it sit? What would we like to change it? We, the 50,000 needs to be 10,000, can we get 5,000? Or benches out in that hallway?
What a bench is got, I don't know.
Well, there needs to be some in the hallway, I would agree.
Should I, should I put, should we change that to 5,000?
Put something simple.
What do you think? Can we get it for 5,000?
You know what?
Probably.
So, so just, you know, just put 10 in there, and you don't have to spend it all, we're just giving it that, right?
Okay.
The card one is...
Because I would, 50,000 seems alive, I asked for 30, we bumped it to 50.
Okay.
Okay?
How much, how much you do for a bench?
I would like benches in the whole courtroom.
10.
Get rid of all the fabric surfaces, period. And then you just have a natural, I mean, it'd look more like a courtroom, in my opinion.
Can I get a contact for you?
Could appreciate that.
For benches, wooden benches.
Next.
Checkpills.
Yes, please, next.
Okay. Thank you for bringing up about the benches, I appreciate that. Let's see, then there's admin.
Oh, total.
Total's 99,000, bunch of different things on there.
What's the admin capital for, 99?
Well, we'll need, we'll need some funds to move over, so I, I put $10,000 there. I, I suspect, you know, it'll be somewhere between 5 and 10.
That's the relocation down below?
Uh, no, it's the relocation to the fires, the fireside.
Oh, there's, there's 299, 340s in here. On the worksheet, bench nine.
No, that's 2024 total, and then total, total.
Yeah.
Because the other years don't have it.
Yeah, we, we don't expect to have anything going forward.
So the, the total is just the, the total for the year, because a lot of people have vehicles and stuff, and ours is just other, right? So we have a relocation of $10,000. I expect that it'll be somewhere between 5 and 10.
The, I was asking what the city rebranding was, it sounds exciting.
Oh, yeah, I see.
You're talking relocation, hiring a movie company to move your furniture?
Oh, I have no idea, we, that's not what we did, we used...
You use prisoners for free.
Well, and if we can, we certainly will.
You use prisoners for free, all you can do is feed them lunch, give them cigarettes, have you a plan?
They don't get cigarettes, they get food.
So anyway, that's, that's in case there's some unexpected, unexpected expense due to the relocation.
City rebranding?
I know, that's what I'm asking about, I'm really excited about it.
Rebranding? We don't need any branding again.
They select for the branding of the city, including a new logo and...
We just went through that with the last mayor.
We went through that eight years ago.
Eight years.
And it's the refresh, it's time for a refresh.
We need to.
One day we got, we need to...
I think it's a good idea, I don't know how much it'll cost, but I think it's...
30,000.
It's dated.
It is dated, it is time for the city to look like it actually is. What, while also, to Jason's point, making clear what we are, that we are the city. Because there are lots of conflicting entities here. So it would be working with an outside creative agency to, and I'm really sorry, I can't tell how loud I'm talking because my ears...
You're fine.
...are blocked up, but, um, to come up with a, a design, doing the whole process, which would include, you know, an employee brainstorming session, a whiteboarding session, a whole, whole big, like, this is your big vision and we're gonna create an icon based on that, so.
I'm gonna put marijuana on a teacher.
So how did we go through this last rebranding there?
I was not part of that, I don't know.
You weren't there then?
No. It was, it was...
Because I thought the brand we had was okay before that.
Well, it was at Dogwood Stakers.
I don't remember what, what was before that.
Dogwood, Dogwood, it's a city of all this.
We had a contest in the city with the kids drawing.
I thought that was... You gotta ask what's wrong with the one we have now?
It's dated.
It is.
It's, it's kind of a lot. Typically, brands aren't gonna have that much visual chaos going on. You want one thing to look at, one thing to focus on, maybe not so many colors. I would like it to be kind of a little more lively, modern, greater, maybe? Just to kind of depict where we are as a city versus where we were as a city.
I think where we were originally with the, with the flowers set us apart from the POA. What we have now is very similar to the POA, you gotta really look at the vehicles.
And it is extremely...
Similar to the POA, we got squares, they got Oakleys.
Yeah.
So where you've been looking.
It's nearly identical to CEI engineering.
A POA truck's got Oakleys on them.
We got, we got three squares.
An addition to, but the-
No, they got an Oakley and said Bellavista, I don't know where you went.
You know, look at all the-
You ain't been there, just go and look.
Okay.
All the water. You said, I, I can tell you, one issue is, and I'm looking at it because it's on that clock out there, that's why I keep looking over there. And it's, well, it's on this. It just says Bellavista, and I think there was, rightly or wrongly, an effort when this was first created for it to look all-inclusive, which creates a lot of confusion for people, especially when it's on the side of a pickup truck or whatever, who's showing up to talk to me? Who you, who are you with and all that? And to me, it always looked more like a tourism logo than it did an official government logo, and I think, people, I just, when people get a letter from the government, then you know it's from the government, you know? I, I think that's, that's one thing I see, is just making sure people understand that it's something official rather than a, something that may look a little more toward the marketing side, I guess.
And there's a daycare center in Bentonville that's got four squares, and two of the four match, are three. Some 28th three.
Well, Cassie pointed out to me that CE, is it CEI Engineering? Their logo is very close to ours.
Actually, Taylor pointed that out. They probably have the same designers.
It's eight years ago.
Okay. Let's see, so that's admin, that leaves-
And just to clarify, that trail maps line item is printed pocket-sized trail maps, which we have not had made in a few years because the trail systems keep changing.
Yeah.
And so that may or may not happen. It's their kind of assist, depending on if we get a, a trail system that doesn't change for a little while. But those are in demand, that's why we budget for that.
I have a question for you on the city rebranding, you have $30,000. That's probably about three times that amount. You look at all of the, all of the shirts that are out there that we have, you know, we've got party department, but you've got the street, you've got all of those that have the logos on, they all have that logo on the clock, with your name, and so you're talking about replacing all of those.
Yeah, but they pay for them themselves, so that, you can't cut that part of the rebranding.
Then we don't have to buy all that at once.
True that.
Well, that plot can stay up there for a while.
Yeah, but I thought, didn't we furnish the clothing? The logo clothing for those people?
Some people buy themselves, and some they don't. We were going to have a sticker that you just put over there.
Yeah, fire, oh, my name is.
Burnout Patch.
As part of what we will get out of that will also be a complete style guide, which will tell people what they can and can't do with the logo. So if somebody wants to go out and buy their own shirt and put the logo like diagonal or whatever, they won't be able to do that. So it really will kind of make it cohesive throughout the city, what the, the city's brand actually looks like.
I haven't seen anyone with a shirt on that.
Well, you know, just in case.
Well, somebody complained about the colors, that you could have any color in the world. It's things like that, we're going to have a more controlled situation.
So all the shirts will be brown instead of green, or purple and yellow and orange?
Yeah, there'll only be certain things that are purple.
Certain color?
Neon.
I think we're just sort of wasting our time, let's move on.
I was just trying to, you know, rebranding is not a, not a cheap thing to do. You got all the vehicles that repaint, and you got-
Okay, the next one.
You just get magnetic ones that can open from car to car.
The next one is capital request for IT, and it's 185,000. John, you want to talk about these at all?
Sure, I've got two projects on the board. The first one is to replace a bundle of server equipment at the police station that is, some of it is as old as 2017, so we set a five-year standard a while back. So it's kind of lived on borrowed time, and I wanted to wait and see which direction chief was going to go with the body cameras. But now that we have some more clarity on that, we'll be ready to move forward with that one. And the other one is Toughbooks, Police and Fire, and the street department. And they use a tougher laptop that's made to take out the weather, take out the field. They're a little more expensive, but we have several of those that are over five years old. So we plan to replace those as well.
Okay, thank you. So that's pretty much the whole story. We're going to have the work session, of course, on December 11. We're hoping to approve the budget on December 18. Feel free to give feedback in your mind about things, if you think things you want to talk about.
You said you were hoping to approve, why shouldn't?
Well, we need to approve it, actually.
Do you have any, do you have any reason for a possible change?
No, no, I think we already should.
Are you getting here with the question?
No, I think we will.
So wasn't one need to approve the budget?
Oh, I thought he's, he asked an additional question.
Legally, you don't have to do it till the end of January, but as our attorneys pointed out, if you don't do it December, it's extremely awkward because, you know, things start happening first of January.
That's an example, if you do payroll, you've got to change the payroll.
Yeah, right.
The only thing I will say, we're, we're good today. But I've got concerns moving into the future. Just looking at what's, what's the outlay is looking forward, you know, for the next four years and what we think we need. And, you know, if we would do everything today and say, okay, we're going to just go ahead and buy everything through 20, whatever the last year is, theoretically, we'd be 18 million in the hole, right? And I think every year, over the next few years, I can see us being $2 million to the good versus what our future budgets are and verse, and also in what I think we're going to collect in taxes. But that still doesn't cover for that 18 million. So I really think, somebody needs to sit down and take a really good hard look today and be thinking about it in the future, not just, just hope and just like look right now, today and say, we're okay. Because I do think we're going to have some issues, unless something drastically happens in this community to start generating some additional revenue.
I'm more worried about the election in 2024, see what happens after that.
Yeah, but anyway.
And one of the serious parts of it, if we spend all of our cash next year in our budget, which is kind of, kind of likely to be, I think it puts us behind the eight ball, and we may seriously need to think about bonding to some degree, some of those big expenditures. So we have more cash and, and even though we're paying additional interest.
Thank you for your thoughts, I appreciate it. Okay.
Good job.